All right, good morning, everybody. I'll call to order this Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, August 19th.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present. All right, do we have Reverend didn't make it today? All right, so I understand David Lee's gonna be doing the invocation. Let's all, please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, David.
Okay, if you would all bow with me, please. Father, we thank you for this glorious day. We appreciate the opportunity to walk on this earth one more time. We pray for guidance and we want to lift up all of our healthcare workers, our county commission and leadership as we work through this COVID-19 pandemic. We pray for a quick resolution to this, a cure so that we can get back to normal life. Father, we do these things in your name, we pray, amen.
All right, thank you. All right, Derek, anything that's not listed in their correspondence and organizational business we need to talk about?
No, sir.
All right, Janet, is there any public comment today?
No, sir.
All right, our consent agenda today would be to consider approving minutes from the budget hearing on August the 5th. Our meeting minutes on August the 12th. Our minutes from our canvas of the election is on August 12th. And claim vouchers in the amount of $1,270,971.69. Tax change orders in the amount of a negative $2,106.96. Is there a motion to approve a consent agenda? Oh, we have a few other things. Consider soliciting bids to finance the new 2019 140 M3 all-wheel-drive motor grader for Public Works Department. Now is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Mr. Dunn?
All right, looks like Don got in for a motion and Commissioner Dunn for a second?
Correct.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote? Commissioner Howard?
I'll abstain from the canvas minutes and vote yes on the rest.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. That brings us down to our items of business. The first is to consider for approval executing a resolution approving the issuance of $2,620,000 worth of lease revenue re-funding bonds by the Franklin County Public Building Commission.
All right, thanks, Cole. We've discussed this at several meetings. We are in the process of refinancing the bonds that were used to pay for the JDC. Approving this resolution is the next step in that process. I have both David Artaberry, our financial advisor, as well as Tyler Ellsworth, our bond counsel, on the phone. Tyler, I will turn it over to you and you can take us from here.
Thanks, Derek, and good morning, Commissioners. This is Tyler Ellsworth. I'd like to walk you through kind of the proceedings that are being requested of the county board this morning and also the proceedings that will be requested of you all when you adjourn the county board meeting and reconvene as the Public Building Commission. But before I do that, as Derek mentioned, Dave Artaberry, the county financial advisor, has joined this meeting. And what I'd like to do is first give Dave an opportunity to kind of review the financing just in terms of the numbers and in terms of the overall savings that the county and the PBC were able to realize as a result of the refinancing. So, Dave?
Sure, thank you, Tyler. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, again.
Good, good. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to participate here today. As Tyler and Derek both mentioned, this is really kind of the culmination of all of the events related to the refinancing of the Public Building Commission bonds. The steps that, you know, the commission, the county commission and the Public Building Commission will take today will essentially finalize the bond issue and lock in the interest rates. And just to kind of recap where we ended up, the outstanding bonds, the series 2011 bonds that are being refinanced carry an average rate of about 4.11% on them. The bid provided by Kansas State Bank to purchase the new bonds carried an interest rate of 2% on them. So basically, we're approximately cutting the interest cost in half on the outstanding debt. This will end up resulting in, unfortunately, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I believe it was $298,700 in savings to the county over the course of the next 12 years. So reduce your annual payment somewhere between, I think around $25,000 per year, which hopefully should provide some nice cash flow relief for that facility. That's really about it. It's a, this process has kind of gone back and forth between a public offering and a private placement. But I think ultimately, the final result here is a very nice result and hopefully staff and the commission feels the same way. So with that, I'd welcome any questions you'd have.
Don, I have no question, but I want to appreciate David and our staff and hard on this, getting the county the best deal we can. And I feel you've done a responsibly good thing for the whole community. That's all I got.
All right. And see any questions? Derek, anything else you want to say before we look to, look for the motion that's on our agenda?
Yeah, I would say, I've got a couple things. One, I think you'll want to turn it back over to Tyler as soon as I am through so that he can kind of walk you through what it is that you're doing before we ask for a motion. But just to piggyback on what David had to say, I think we're, at the staff level that we're really pleased with here is this is gonna provide relief and a fund that really kind of needs it. We're very happy with our finances, but the annex fund is, it's trending in the right direction, but it's been a little bit harder for us to find the same type of relief that we have been able to find in some of our other funds. And so, as all of you know, we pay these bonds with revenue from the annex fund. And so, that $25,000 worth, give or take, worth of annual savings will be realized in that fund. And so, we're really pleased with that. I think particularly when we're working on a remodel project right now and, you know, obviously, we were for that with funds from the annex fund. And so, it's great, you know, anytime you can save several hundred thousand dollars, it's a no-brainer. And I think the cherry on top is that it's really helping a fund that Janet and I have been targeted for targeting to try and improve. So with that, Tyler, do you want to walk the board through some of these documents?
Before we do that, this Commissioner Dunn, what was the payment, annual payment before, before this refinance?
This is Dave. Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to defer to Tyler because I'm not in front of my computer right now. Tyler, do you happen to have the final numbers runs that would show that?
I do, I do. Commissioner Dunn, the existing debt service on the 2011, on the 2011 bonds is around $295,000 a year from now through 2031. And after the refinancing, the new debt service will be around $267,000 a year. So right around $30,000, maybe between $25,000 and $30,000 a year.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's what I wanted to know, what the annual, annual savings was, or the, yeah, annual saving was. Thank you.
Sure. Any additional questions on the numbers before I walk through some of the proceedings?
Doesn't sound like, go ahead, thank you.
Okay. Well, so, the proceedings this morning require action by the county board as well as action by the Public Building Commission and a separate Public Building Commission following the board's, separate Public Building Commission meeting following the board's meeting this morning. So, for the county board's part, the county is being asked to consider a resolution which approves the refinancing. It approves the issuance of the bonds by the Public Building Commission and approves the execution of certain bond documents. The reason that both the county board and the PBC have to take action this morning is because, A, the Public Building Commission is actually the issuer of these bonds. These bonds are not a debt of the county. The issuer of the bonds is actually the Public Building Commission as an entity. And the second reason that both the county and the Public Building Commission are being asked to take action this morning is because the bonds, I think as you all are probably aware, but for the benefit of the public, the bonds are payable from lease revenues, which the county pays to the PBC. So the county and the PBC have leases for this facility between the two of them. The county pays lease rental to the PBC and the PBC uses those lease rentals to pay the debt service on the bond. So, the resolution that the county board is being asked to consider this morning approves the issuance to the bonds by the PBC and it approves the execution of the bond documents and the lease documents between the county and the PBC. And when, when we get to the PBC portion of the meeting, I'm happy to walk through sort of what the PBC is being asked to do separately. But with that, I'll pause and ask whether there are any questions on the county board's action this morning.
Sounds like we got it.
All right, Tyler, are you ready for a motion then on that resolution?
I am.
Sometimes Commissioners want to know the resolution number. Do you have that by chance, Janet?
I believe it'll be 18, 2018.
All right. Either way, Tyler's outlined what this resolution he'll do and affirmative motion in support of this item would be to make a motion to execute the revolution, resolution, not revolution.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
All righty, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Sound like Commissioner Howard got in there first.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, Derek or Tyler, anything else?
This is Tyler, nothing further from me until we get to the PBC portion of things.
All right, we'll hear from you shortly then, so.
Yeah, no, I'm ready to move to the next item, Cole.
All right, thanks, thanks, guys. The second item is to consider awarding financing for the 816 landfill compactor we purchased for the Public Works landfill. David?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, we solicited bids from a number of, well, all the local banks and we received four bids that we opened on August 7th. The lowest and best bid was submitted by Patriots Bank with an interest rate of 1.48%, which is very, very good, for a total payment of $495,757.72. That amounts to about seven, just over $17,000 in interest costs. And we'll have four payments spread out over four years, starting, our first payment isn't due until 2021, and our payments will be just under $124,000. This is a positive outcome. The money that we deposit into the special caps where this will be paid for, in 2018, we deposited 140, just over 140,000. 2019 was just over 158,000. And so far this year, we've already deposited just under 135,000 into special caps. So what this means is we'll be able to make these payments in the next few years and still be able to put a few thousand dollars into the special caps fund to be able to maintain the level of funding that we have in that account right now in order to pay for the improvements and the KDHE permits and whatnot in the years down the road. So I feel like this is a very good bid. We had one other bid that was awfully close to this at 1.5%, but the lowest and best bid was submitted by Patriots Bank and we're recommending going forward with Patriots Bank.
All right. Any questions for David? Pretty straightforward item, a motion awarding the financing for the 2028 16K landfill compactor to Patriots Bank in the amount of $495,757.72 is what we're having in front of us. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. For our third item, we have an application for CDBG funds in front of us. Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, these applications have, Paul's been bringing them to us now for several weeks. This is the most recent one. I know Paul is on the line, so Paul, if you would, I'll let you walk the board through this application.
Sure, thank you, Derek. Good morning, Commissioners. This most recent one is for Snow Inc. out of Lane, Kansas. They have been negatively impacted by COVID-19 and are seeking support through this grant program. We have run it through all the channels. It's been approved by our consultant underwriter. And this grant, they're seeking funding for reimbursement for some payroll and utilities and some materials totaling $5,634.77. And with the grant application that's gone through the required process, we're recommending to the commission approval of this grant to Snow Inc. in that amount of $5634.77 today. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. This is Don. Paul, I appreciate all you've done on this and I know those personally down there and they've been a long time, lifelong citizens of Franklin County and all their kids and theirself and their family. And they've done the best they can to keep a business there in the small city of Lane. And I know it's not a big business, but any business is a good business in a little town. And I think they've worked real hard to help the county and keep a business thriving in a small community. I'd just like to thank Paul before we move on.
Thank you. I would agree. They're a very worthy recipient and they've worked very hard to keep that business going and keep it there in Lane.
All right, appreciate you, Paul. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the attached application for CDBG funds?
I'll make that motion, this is Don.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, thanks again, Paul. We appreciate all your work on this.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to staff reports. Let's start off with Derek.
Yeah, so Janet and I have continued to work through this spark funding process with our consultant in the state of Kansas. On Monday, our direct aid spending plan and reimbursement plan, both were filed with the state. I will tell you, this has been a frustrating process, much like trying to navigate this entire pandemic. Like, we're just in uncharted territory and it's not anybody's fault. I mean, the state didn't know that this pandemic was coming either, but it's, guidance has been, nonexistent is probably too strong of a word, but we're not getting the level of guidance that we would like. So our plan's been filed, that still has to be approved by the state. And then there's the whole next procedural element of this, which involves how do we get the allocated money to the recipients? So you will recall, this plan had allocations to the cities and the school districts, but as we talked about last week, the county is still responsible for every dime of this. So it would not be responsible for us to write checks to these entities and just say, "Go spend it however you see fit," because if they use it for a purpose that isn't deemed eligible, then we're on the hook for it. And so, that's where we're at currently. We're working with our consultant. That's a slow process just because of how busy they are right now. But we're trying to develop a procedure whereby, you know, these uses of funds get reviewed and approved by us prior to the purchases happening so that obviously, we have a say in that. But it's been a slow process and certainly, we're working diligently on that. Received, have been receiving a lot of questions, understandably so, from the schools, from the cities, and just trying to let them know that we are passing guidance along as quickly as we are receiving it. And so, we will continue to do that. Nick and his staff continue to, I mean, they're doing an exceptional job of working through this pandemic. One of the growing concerns, and we've spoken a lot with Dr. Bud about this, is schools and the reopening of schools, specifically activities. I'm gonna turn this over to Nick and let him talk about it a little bit more, but how to handle activities right now is gonna be a major issue. We're seeing schools in the Johnson County area already start, you know, based on their gating criteria. I think Shawnee Mission was the latest domino to fall. They're just saying, you know, with the current rate of the spread of COVID being what it is, we're not going to do fall activities. So until that trajectory changes, that's where they're at. This, I have got to believe that this is gonna become a logistical issue for schools in this district, particularly 290, who I'm assuming has some of these schools on their schedule. And so that is something we are trying to assist with in any way that we can. Like, I get the impression that, you know, there isn't a desire down here from the school boards to summarily take any action. I feel like we're gonna have to see it fail, so to speak. We're gonna have to see COVID spread, but that's, you know, that's just my own belief on where it's at. But certainly, we, you know, we're working hard with schools to try and set up our own gating criteria and are encouraging them the best that we can. And so, with that, I'll turn this over to Nick and he can talk in more detail about what him and his staff have been doing. Nick, are you on the phone?
Yes, sir, I am. Good morning, Commissioners. Derek talked, we have turned a lot of our focus towards the schools and the opening plans that they have, trying to assist them in the best that we can. One of the topics that has came up, we do have a meeting with the athletic director and the superintendent scheduled now for nine o'clock tomorrow morning to discuss what activities are gonna look like. One of the biggest concerns is how many people they're gonna fill their stands with and how we can work with them. And I want to start this out with saying, throughout this whole process, the schools have been very willing to work with us, just like the nursing facilities. I believe our community, as far as they as a whole, have been willing to work with the health department, Dr. Ransom. We've seen the tractor show a little fair, now the demolition, they be all, you know, work with us to cancel their activities to slow the spread. So I anticipate we'll have a good meeting on Thursday to figure out what some places are doing. I know I have gotten some feedback that some of the schools are not planning to allow any spectators. Some of them are planning to maybe give the kids free tickets to take and get out. So there are some plans out there. I'm excited to talk to them tomorrow and learn of what we're doing. Any questions to the commissioners about the schools, anything I can answer before we move forward with anything else in our report? All right. With the nursing facility, we continue to work with them. We continue to work hand in hand with the first department. There has been some changes as they have talked about with creating the inmates, so we're working with that. I'll tell you that we're up to 94 positives in August, which, although July we had 83, so we could pass that, but still quite a bit of the month left to get to. So we are continuing to see positive cases and really working to see what's gonna happen when school doors open and once again, and be prepared for that. I really don't have a whole, I'm on a report. I will tell you that I have two LPAs and a court fired that are working in the trailer right now on the COVID response. Has been amazing because it gives us the chance to allow the health department staff to focus on the cool shots and the ever approaching flu season. So we are lining that out and getting that sorted and ready to go. So just busy times in the departments. Are there any questions for me that I can answer? All right, well, thank you. All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick. Casey, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple really quick things. I did want to mention that Nick and I have continued to work on our COVID updates. We put out something daily and just the the actual numbers reports go out Monday, Wednesday, Friday. But we keep updating those based on questions that we receive from the public. But if the commissioners ever have any questions or thoughts on something that needs added, like, please let us know. We try to keep it updated each week with new things that people want to know more about. So we're trying to be really transparent and make sure everybody's getting all the information that they need. Also, some exciting news are Franklin County branding or rebranding new logo is going to be rolling out to department heads this week. And I will also put the commissioners on that email. There's a lot that goes into rolling out the new brand with new letterhead, new business cards. There's just a plethora of things that you'll see in the email. And the thought is that we will actually make this go public by September one. So that will be through our social media and our website and our emails. Everybody will have an email signature that's consistent across the board. And that will that will happen on September first, but next week, at the end of this week, department heads will get it. And then we'll introduce it to employees next week. And the following week, people will start seeing it publicly. Now, as far as business cards, there are things that departments have to order with the new logo on it. That will just kind of be a phased approach based on when they need to order it. We're not asking anybody to order brand new just because of the new logo. So you'll kind of see that phase phase out of the the old logo and the phase in of the new. And then other than that, one quick thing about the census. They're really pushing the census hard again. We're at almost only forty days to complete the count. And our local census committee says we're at about seventy percent. And so I just wanted to state publicly, people are gonna start knocking on doors. The census hires individuals to go and get you to fill out the census. So if you're listening and you haven't filled out your census yet, please fill out your census. Unless you have any questions, that's all that I have.
All right, thank you, Casey. David Lee?
Okay, commissioners, so crews have been patching potholes on Stafford west of fifty-nine. And we're currently working on Jackson east of Vermont. We've got another day or so out there. We've also been able to get started again on the Haskell Road Lowwater Crossing. The rains that we had a few weeks ago really pushed that project behind schedule. But we're back out there again. We've got all the rebar tied together and we've got concrete slated to be poured on Monday, barring any unforeseen weather issues. We've got a couple of ditching projects working, one along Stafford east of Montana. And then along fifty-nine, just north of Sand Creek by Anderson Tire, we're working on that area. We've got to get permission from the landowner to to get back into the 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 bottom of the drainage ditch that runs behind that property to make some improvements there so we can get water flowing. So hopefully that area won't flood again. Additionally, we've had several of our blade operators and even our road and bridge foremen, operating mowers for the last, off and on for the last month or so to catch up on our mowing. We've been working on that and will continue to do that for a while longer. The project on Iowa Terrace is being held up a little bit, not by anything the contractor's done, but an issue at the pipe manufacturing plant. They were shut down for for a period of time and they're slowly getting up to up to speed on getting the pipe manufactured. I'm hoping to have a little bit more information at the end of the week as to when the pipe will be delivered and we can get get the contractor out there to get started. So that's a little bit behind schedule, but again, it's, you know, ultimately COVID related. Some of the things that we're gonna be doing coming up, we're gonna continue doing some patching and ditch work in various areas around the county. Next week, we've got the bid opening for the Hot Mix Asphalt project. And then that will be brought before you shortly after that. And hope to get that project going in early to mid September, maybe even October. But that'll be become coming before you. And the only other item that I've got on the horizon is our low boy trailer is, we have welded and welded and welded on that and it really needs to be replaced. So I'll be bringing a recommendation before you next week on that. And that's all I have. Well, I do have one other thing. We just approved the financing for the compactor. While I was talking about that, the compactor was being delivered to the landfill. So that is onsite and we'll be getting it offloaded and be starting the training on that coming up here in the next few days.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have a quick recycling question. Are we, we are still no long, we are not recycling plastic yet? Is that?
Uh, we are. I I believe that that we have gone back to recycling the the plastic. We we are still accepting it and I believe that we are now sending it to the transfer station we're recycling.
Thank you.
Hey, David, this is Don.
Yes, sir.
You also did a project, didn't didn't we, on just east of Real Water Six Water Plant?
Yeah, what what we did out there, because they they've got some heavy semi-traffic that are going down that minimum maintenance road to to work at their water intake, they've got a project down there. So we went in and added some large rocks, large rock to a few of the low areas. That whole stretch of road is is in the flood plain, so naturally it's it's prone to flooding. There were a couple of low areas that were giving them problems, so we went in and added some large rock to that and and shaped up the rest of it. Once they get done with the heavy semi-traffic down there, we'll go in and add a little rock to that to make it a little better situation.
I just wanted to thank you because I was down there, it had me go down there, so I drove down there. And I think that big rock will really, really improve. I know that's a bad area, but I think that big rock will really add some improvement. Had to congratulate the the employees and yourself. I think it looks really good for the circumstance.
Well, thank you. I will definitely pass that along.
All right, well, thank you, David.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Janet, do you have any updates?
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to commissioners' comments and board reports. Commissioner Howard, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
I only have one thing. I did, been working with the state RC and D councils. And we had a, we was awarded a few months ago twenty-five thousand dollars. And we're working on a deal to go statewide with that that is represented by the RC and D council. And we're gonna, we're getting ready to talk it over a project. We're gonna issue some funds to all the farmers markets and all the RC and D areas in the state of Kansas. So we haven't come to a dollar amount of what we're gonna do for each one, but that is something we're working on. We think it's a very important thing. And I know all of them in our area are very well-run, but they always could use a little more help. So appreciate them. I think they they not only make an economic thing for themselves, they provide a a great service and and a good place for people to get good fresh commodities. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Don. Commissioner Dickinson?
I listened to the city of Ottawa study session on Monday. They are kind of doing what we're doing. They had some temporary notes that they had for the construction of the sewer system at Porchiminy Park, which they are putting out to bond. And decommissioning a piece of equipment in their electric department. And then there was a lot of talk about the census that I think I think we we've been talking so much about COVID that we've kind of not made that a priority. And so there there is quite a bit of our community that has not yet responded to the census. So that we're, the girl, are we really pushing that because all those numbers, if we don't get them counted, then we lose a lot of money. And then one other thing that was brought up, and I hadn't heard this from, that they, I think that they would be interested in resuming our county, city, school, district meetings, maybe remotely, just because we haven't had one for a while. So I'm not sure. I think they approached Derek about that to see if if that might be a possibility. Then I am just giving a shout out to the Franklin County Historical Society for putting the emphasis on the hundredth year anniversary of women's suffrage. There is a display down at the, on the courthouse lawn until Friday that has a lot of, it's an outdoor display, so it you can do your social distancing. But today, from noon to one, there are going to be ladies from our local DAR unit that are going to be dressed in historical costumes and are going to be there to tell us about women's suffrage. So if you have an opportunity today from noon to one to jump down there, that would be a great learning experience. So that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dunn?
I have nothing.
All right, neither do I. So with that, we look for a motion to adjourn, then we can reconvene the public building commission. Is there a motion to adjourn our regular meeting?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
All right. Sounds like Roy was ready to, there it is, Roy. All right, thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Yes.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? We've adjourned our regular county commission meeting.